I don't have the money.
Just waiting. Just waiting for the...
Green.
Good evening. At 6:00 PM, July 26, 2017, I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. First, I'd like to announce this is being televised live on local Mashpee TV. Next, if we could all rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll be stepping down in the first hearing, so sitting on tonight's first hearing will be our three regular board members, because Scott is also stepping down, so two will be stepping down. Three regular board members and the two alternates. And Bill will chair this hearing. So Jim, we'll have you read the first new hearing.
Is it?
No.
Opening up the hearing on 29 Quipish Road, owner Philip A. Hall requests a special permit under 174-45.4 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an accessory apartment on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 55 parcel 5.0 Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Okay. Name and...
Good evening. My name is Philip Hall, and I reside at 29 Quipish Road in Mashpee. Today, I'm requesting a permission for a...an accessory apartment for my mother-in-law. It's basically an existing 22-by-22 garage that I'm finishing off for her to have her own space. She lives with us. We haven't...it's in an existing thing, so we haven't even changed the footprint. Just finishing off a space that was unused before.
So are you familiar with the regulations associated with them?
Yes, I have. It would be granted for me as long as I own the property and at such time that it would have to be reapplied for by a new owner.
174-45.
It can't be...
Tell me the page.
It can't be rented for anybody other than my family, and that's it.
Yeah. There are some other regulations that I want to just go through with you.
When you find it, tell me the page, please.
You did?
Oh.
That makes it a little easier.
There we am, because we can't find it.
Exactly.
I've got it. There it is, right there. It's page 86.
There was one question, I think...
It's under C, Billy.
Size?
Yes.
Units. The unit size, the gross floor space of an accessory apartment shall not be less than 300 square feet, nor more than 40 percent of the gross floor area of the...of the structure on the date the special permit is filed. How many square feet is the total structure?
The total structure is 1,672 square feet. And the apartment size is a 22-by-22, which makes it 484 square feet. Forty percent of 1,672 would be 668.8. So it's less than the 40 percent, and it's greater than 300.
Would be 426.
What's that?
If you take 40 percent of 1,064...
Yes.
That would be 426, which you're exceeded.
Right.
It's not 600. If you do math, roughly 40 percent of...
That's the entire...the entire structure. I'm only finishing one room in that space to make it part of that, but it's...it's basically, it's only finishing off a half of it, but I'm saying the entire unit is...and I can show you on the...on the plan if you'd like.
And I'm certainly willing to hear from you. If you take the 1,064 square feet of the house times 40 percent, which is allowed maximum, that would be 426 square feet, right?
426.
Take 40 percent. Take 1,064 times .40.
No, it's 1,672.
1,672.
Okay.
1672 times .4.
We're showing it as 1,064.
That's what the assessors have as a record.
Yeah, no, that's...that's not correct. That would be very tiny for...
That would help a lot, by the way.
Yeah.
So the total...40 percent of the 1,672 is 660...
Which he would then be fine on that issue.
Correct.
See, we have...we have some discrepancy here, because we're showing 1,064 square feet.
Yeah, no, it's larger than...that's...I've done...I did the drawing myself and take offs for it, so...
So this could be...so do you have...we can rela...we can do this relatively easy, I think, just to check. Do you have dimensions, length and width of the exist...of this house, this box here?
Um, would you like me to come up?
Sure. Yeah, we're not a court of law. Anytime you'd like.
All right.
Shake hands. How you doing? So if you've got that times that, and then we already have this, we can tell you what the square footage is.
This is...I believe...I believe this is 26 by...this is 26 plus 12, so...
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight times 26 times 2.
So 988 times 2, 1976. So, okay, 1976.
You got that.
Okay, and then what is this and this? You've got the...
That's 22 by 22.
So 22 by 22, 22 times 22 equals...484. So 986 plus 484 equals...wow, that's even bigger.
1,460.
Yeah, but it should be...
So it's a heck of a lot bigger than 1,064.
Right.
That's what the select...
Yeah.
That's the assessors gave us.
Yeah. And I can...I had...I...
So you've been under assessed for all these years?
Well, actually, I had them out last year just to go through it, so maybe it's...maybe it's a typo.
Yeah, I'm wondering...
1,64 or 1,600, you know, maybe just...
So, may I speak for a second, Billy?
Yeah.
So what...so the question becomes then, how do we certify and know for certain what the footage is at this point in time to move him, to help him? I mean, we're sitting here now thinking it might be 1,064 because of the assessors and thinking that dimensions show it over 2,000, and we have an applicant sitting in front of us. How do we...where do we go from here?
Exactly. Well, our town documents say that it's...it seems to be...
1064.
That seems to be obviously wrong, just from the dimension shown here on the plan. 1064, it's probably 16...there's a...there's a digit missing. I'll transpose. This is...it's 1672.
This is what I got from one of the...
Huh?
This is what I got from one of the assessors, so. Screen porch, so you're...so that dimension, we just said, includes the screened porch. Is that okay with...is zoning enforcement...
Because that's the screen porch is a 12-by-12.
Yeah, but the dimension he just would have given us would have included that screen porch at over 2,000 square feet. He doesn't even need to...even if he doesn't include it, he's probably at where he's thinking 1,600 or thereabouts, which still gets somewhere he needs to get to. It seems as though, if you think this through, he is closer certainly to the 1,600-plus than he is to the 1,064.
Right.
I mean, it's...
Okay. As far as...as far as I'm concerned, I think that the town records probably aren't as accurate, is what the...
What about, Billy, if in fact we condition it to make sure that he clarifies this with the building inspector at the time of the application for his building permit?
Mm-hmm.
And it would seem to me it would be easy clarification, just do an ASBILT or length times certified ASBILT or something, and that can get him moving. It seems to me all indications are that it's bigger than 1,064.
You can put any type of condition you would like, but...
Can I bother you for a second? Does this mean anything here? Could this be it? Net area 1950.
It could be, but it depends on how they figure net.
Mm-hmm. I just wanted to...
I think we can get...and I think we can get by it.
I do, too. We'll condition it on...
Yeah.
Those are the scaled drawings and so forth.
Pardon?
Those are all scaled drawings and measured myself. I do everything work, so...
They're not stamped or anything else that's really certified. These are just prepared...
They also needed site plan for parking.
I have a...I sent the...this, which is the septic permit...
Yes, I have.
And showed...and showed these accurately for the parking. There's enough room for about five cars in the rear original...this is the original driveway, and this was the driveway that they added when they added the septic system. So there's two separate driveways.
So what is this proposed driveway?
That was proposed at the time they did this, but when they laid this out for grading before I owned the house, they had to lay this out slightly different because of where they actually put the leaching field. So because the leaching field was there, they didn't have an...they didn't have it rated for the weight, so they said as a condition for this passing the septic was they had to alter the driveway, which they did, and it was signed off.
When you just said, "signed off by whom?"
When it was inspected by the...by the town.
So how could I make...all right, so...
This is...and this is pretty accurate. There's enough for between two and four cars here, another one here for the main parking, and for the extra parking over here, there's room for at least five cars. So this is the original driveway where the garage used to be.
I'm just trying to understand how this can become part of the record.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, Billy?
You can take...you can...it can add this directly to it, because that's what's actually there. There is plenty of parking.
I don't know. I'd feel a lot more comfortable with a site plan that kind of shows us...
Yeah. So, if I may speak for a moment?
Go ahead.
So I'm looking, and so I am moving forward, but I think it's important we look at the Board of Health comments, because you're referring to the Board of Health. So may I read that?
Yeah, please do.
Right, so 29 Wapish Road, Board of Health comments. "Property is not located in a Zone 2 ground or contribution area. The proposed accessory apartment is considered an increase in flow from three bedrooms to four. It appears that the laundry room was an original bedroom as the other two bedrooms are upstairs, and the original septic permit was for three bedrooms. The existing septic system is large enough for the four bedrooms. A septic inspection is required due to the increase in flow. The floor plans submitted for the ZBA filing do not match the April 2017 plans used for the smoke detector alarm system permit. There are no kitchen facilities shown for the apartment." Doesn't one of our regulations say it has to be separate?
It does.
It does have...it's...it's set up that way now, so it...to be done that way. The smoke detectors have all been installed, and the CO detectors have all been installed.
Something is, is our document doesn't depict that.
Okay. I can add that.
See, we need...
Okay.
The document, even that you've handed us, doesn't really depict it either.
It might just be an old...
I mean this.
See this here? Doesn't show a kitchen or a facility here, both.
Doesn't show kitchen.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
Yes. You're...you're correct. This is the...this is the kitchen section and living area here, but it was set up before in the planning stage and just never got changed.
Does this already exist?
It was...it was...I did it in haste, because I was...I was going through a family issue, and it was done for some...for a personal issue, and I...it literally had to be done within a month or two, and I didn't wait for it. I went afterwards and went to Charlie, explained the situation, and he said, "Apply for it. Go through the process and take care of it."
So how...if I may...
Back in 2014.
2014, correct.
September.
Continue...well, so what...what are your feelings on this? As a zoning enforcement officer and also building inspector, et cetera, what are your feelings on this issue?
I have no feelings on it.
Well, your opinion.
My position...
Your opinion.
My opinion is this, is what I have here is what's, you know, based on the information that I got from the assessors, I came up with it being over the square footage, but that's up to the board end. But as I pointed out here, it was discovered back by Charlie back in September of 2014 that the garage was already converted without any permits, so to date, whatever works been there has not been permitted.
That's correct.
So if there's something's plastered, just from my own understanding, if something's plastered, is that coming down? Where...where do you...
It's a possibility.
Okay. So I think it's important for us to get you in compliance. It seems like you want to do that.
That's exactly why I...
So as one member, and I'm only speaking as one member...
Give him a copy.
I think the file needs to be correct.
Okay.
So it needs to have a plan that depicts the correct...the kitchen. Then the compliance of the doc...of our zoning bylaw needs to be reflected in your documents.
I'm going to give you...
That's parking...sorry.
I'm going to give you a copy of the actual bylaw.
I think I have that here.
You do?
I believe so.
If you do, you didn't really read it, or you didn't follow the instructions in it, because there are a lot of things in here that you need to prove to this board before we can make an approval.
Okay.
And I would go through this very carefully, and I'd be...my suggestion is to continue this, and the next time you appear, I would suggest that you go through this bylaw, step by paragraph by paragraph, and indicate to us visually on some type of plan that each one of these issues have been met.
Okay.
Because otherwise, we're just guessing and shooting in the dark and listening to you. I understand you've done certain things and you've made changes, and, I mean, even the thing that...the document you've given us doesn't show a kitchen. It doesn't show some of the things that we really, really need to see. It doesn't really show us the square footage of the total structure versus the square footage of the accessory apartment, which is a very important factor. It doesn't show us any parking, other than the document you gave us here. We'd need to see all that and make it...make it very clear to us so that we can make an appropriate decision.
I just got a copy of this yesterday. David Moore, I believe, that you sent me, I think, a couple days ago.
I applaud the fact that you're trying to get this into compliance.
And I was...I was...basically was trying to...I didn't understand the significance of...
That's very fair. I understand.
And as one member, I'll speak as only one member, you wouldn't be wasting your time when you do those things. Why? Because I want to see you come in and comply, so that would be a good thing.
I do as well.
And so...but if you could maybe even get your engineer who did this to put it on the plan and make sure your...you know, just go through the list and do it as professional as possible. Don't want to spend a lot of your money.
Get that out of the way.
But if you can get it done as professional as possible...
It might give us...
Dimensions on your building, so that we understand what they are.
I can...I can do all...
I mean, I'm...for one member person, only here, I'm liking...I'm okay with it, but you need to just bring it to the next level.
Okay. Do you need a certified plot plan? I know they're...they can be pricey.
That would be...that would be up to the gym.
But I can...I haven't changed the footprint of it and...at all, so the driveways are all existing on that engineered plan, so except for the...except for the driveway.
I don't want to see you have to go to the expense of a certified shot.
Sure. I'm...that's...I'll go along with...
I think...I think if you give us something that we can reasonably rely on, we'll be okay.
And maybe put down the bottom what I'd recommend is revised, and your signature on it, and give us four or five of these, so it's more of...not just one, maybe some dimensions in the parking.
Absolutely.
Try to act like an engineer, if you could.
I can do that. I'll take...I can take care of it.
And we understand you're not...I'm being facetious, but at least some things that we can rely on that go into the folder so that we can point to and say, "Parking is 20 by 20." And remember, a space for parking, I think, is 9 by 18. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes.
That...so if you're putting two spaces, that's going to be 18 by 18, right? So just to...
Yeah.
Those are the types of things that are important. Put those dimensions, those types of things.
Not...
We're not trying to get you to spend a lot of money, but we're...
No, no, and I just want to...I want to get in compliance. I didn't have a choice at the time, so I'm trying to make it...make it right.
And we're happy to see that.
We are, too. Yeah, absolutely. For now, what I'd like to do, though, is also read into the record tonight the other town departments that have commented on this. We've read into the record the Board of Health comments. You read that in, right?
Yes.
Conservation, property not within the conservation jurisdiction, so they don't have any comment. Can you read these statements?
Sure. So Inspection Department, RE July 26, 2017, hearing to the members of the zoning Board of Appeals, 29 Wapish Road. "The area is zoned R3, and the applicant is seeking a special permit under 174-45.4 of the zoning bylaws for an accessory apartment. The board needs to confirm that the existing accessory apartment conforms to the requirements of 174-45.4 of the zoning bylaws. It was discovered...discovered back in September of 2014 that the garage was already converted without any permit. Based on information from the assessor's office, the area of the home is 1,064 square feet. The area of the accessory apartment is 484 square feet. Forty percent of 1,064 is 426 square feet. Thus, the accessory apartment is 58 square feet over. So you're going to need to prove to us that that is incorrect."
I can do that.
And...
I can do that. I'll do a square footage takeoff for you, showing the accurate square footage.
And we're here to help you, and hopefully, next time you come back.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments?
Well, I have one. This is digressive, although...
Sure.
So what's the square footage you say that the house is?
I believed it was 600...1,600 and 60.
1,660. Okay.
But I can...I'm going...
Well, this way, we know what we're working off of. Like I said, we're working off of the information from the assessor's office, and it happens. You know, you could be totally correct. I just want to make sure what your figure is compared to if you do come back next time. That way, you see what's changed.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to continue this.
Okay.
I believe...
Comments from the audience?
Any comments out in the audience on this? No.
Maybe have the applicant request for a continuance.
Yeah, you're going to request the continuance, otherwise we'll hear the case tonight.
You don't want that.
Okay. I request a continuance to the next meeting.
Okay. It's August 9?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's request for a continuance until August 9, 2017.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We see you on August 9. Hopefully, we have...
Thank you. Get it all straightened out.
Do you have my conservation notes?
I do.
I have any?
I do.
So you took mine?
No, they're in here. They're in there.
Oh, really? So they're only that?
The next time.
Oh, my mistake. Thank you, Billy. I apologize.
We're getting back. What do you want to do? Hang on with the...we're trying to figure out what to do with the paperwork.
No, you can just give it back to me.
All right.
Okay.
You want all this back?
Yeah, because it's continued.
All right.
This is something you didn't have. He just gave to us. That's the...
Yeah, you didn't write that.
Right.
What is this?
That's the...that's his site plan. Did I just give you my agenda?
Do you want to call the chairman back in?
Somebody's got my agenda.
No, you have it. Be the next one.
Would you pass me that one, please, Mary Ann? Thank you. I have it. I don't need it. I got it right here.
Why don't we write it?
It's got it.
Boys have a nice conversation?
Oh, yeah. You.
Is that right? Was it pick-on run night?
Okay, all signed, everything?
Why didn't you have an interesting conversation?
Okay.
Continued for you to step down another time.
Nice. All right, Jim, would you read the next new hearing, please?
Opening up the hearing on 34 Riverside Road. Owners David E. and Martha L. Thompson request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow the construction of a bedroom addition on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 119 parcel 125 Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Mr. Chairman, if I can say something. Mr. Cook has done a plan for me some time ago, a house plan. I don't know if I should step down or not. I've not asked any opinions. I'm certainly willing to do so. I don't think I have a conflict, but I'm more than happy to step down if it makes best sense. Well, do you feel there's a conflict? I don't...
Can you vote?
You know, my attitude, though, is, is there's enough alternates here, so why not give them a shot? I mean, really, I mean, listen, there's alternates. I, as an alternate in my life, I enjoyed getting to vote, right? So why don't I step down?
Whole life, I wanted to have a shot.
And you've enjoyed, right?
It's quite all right. Go ahead.
So go stretch your legs.
He just wanted to get out of the seat.
So taking...taking Lauren's place on this will be Jim Gould.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Steve Cook. I'm the owner of K'Tu'apay Design, representing David and Martha Thompson. I'm the project designer. With me in the audience is David and Martha's daughter and son-in-law, the Hansons. The house is pre-existing non-conforming to zone and small cottage, 788 square feet. It was built in 1932. We're proposing is a new addition. I have a site plan on the board there that likes to move forward inform me. As you can see on the...on the site plan, this is the existing house. Right now, it's 6.8 feet from the right property line and 9.5 feet to the bulkhead from the rear property line, 17 feet on the street, where 40 feet is required from the street and 15 from the side and rear. The new addition here in lavender color is conforming to the zoning regulations. It's 16 feet from the rear, 33.2 feet from the left property line, and 40 feet off the street. So the new addition is conforming to the current zoning requirements. Lot coverage right now is 14.6 percent. It's gone up to 17.6 percent, so a 3 percent increase, but still underneath 20 percent. New addition is going to be in a closed space with a porch, but all exterior features match the existing cottage. There was a new three-bedroom septic system proposed for this property, for the house. There's an existing garage and an old foundation from a greenhouse, so you can see the existing garage, and then there's a foundation under...for an old greenhouse here. Those will be removed from the property. We meet all requirements of Section 174-17, and basically, that's it.[1625.54] And basically, that's it. Everything conforms.
Okay. Scott, we have comments from the Board of Health. Do you have them?
Aye.
Could you read the Board of Health comments?
34 Riverside Road, Board of Health comments. Property is not in a zone two, so it is not limited by land area. It's considered an increase in flow, so full compliance with Title V is required. Setback is required. The setback to the crawl spaces to the reserve area must be 20 feet. Setting the reserve area below the crawl space does not decrease the crawl space setback. A slab must be provided to utilize a 10-foot setback in the existing dwelling or proposed addition. Floor plans for the existing dwelling are not on file. Please provide floor plans for existing dwelling to confirm number of bedrooms. Are there calculations to show that the primary SAS is to be designed for three bedrooms? That sounds like a question.
Yeah, it is a question.
There's no question mark. It sounds like a question.
So are there calculations on that?
I have to...
To show that the primary SAS is designed for three bedrooms?
Yeah, as far as I know, it is, yes.
Okay, do you know if there's calculations?
Everything was designed by J.C. Engineering.
Okay.
And it is 20 feet away from the crawl space.
So you're happy? Do you want to see the calculations?
Not today.
Eventually.
A second later when he brings in the permit.
Okay. So we have other comments, don't we?
Conservation.
Conservation.
I can read it.
Read it.
34 Riverside Road, property is not within conservation jurisdiction.
Okay. Anything from the building department?
I'm sure there is.
Of course.
Would you like me to read that?
Please, since I can't put my hand on it.
34 Riverside Road. The area is zoned R3, and the property is also within the pre-contact archaeology sensitivity area listed as high. The applicant is seeking a written finding under section 174-17 and section 174-20 of the zoning bylaws to construct a bedroom addition.
Anybody in the, excuse me, anybody on the board, questions or anything? Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Anybody in the audience? Come right up if you would and grab the mic, state your name and address for the record.
I just would like to, I'd like to see the plan, because I live like right next door.
Okay, let's start right in the beginning. What's your name and address?
Hi, I'm Jeanne Concanon.
Yeah?
I live three baby away.
Okay.
And I have butthole.
Right. Did, anybody share any of this with you?
No.
The owners, anybody?
Nobody shared anything.
Okay.
I just got like five of these.
Okay, I think there's...
I haven't seen the plan.
Take this one up there if you'd like. It's an front elevation and a rear elevation. To the shaded areas probably the new.
And that's going off of...
You can see it's in right here. Right here.
Here's the one with that.
That's the plot plan.
The purple is the...
Purple is the addition.
The light gray is existing house.
That's correct.
Three baby away.
Right here.
I own that. This is where I live. Yep.
32 feet, 33 feet.
They're going to take that off. This is their existing house here. All right, so that's going off of that. And where's all the parking go? Because you've got like four cars there. That was what I was kind of concerned. Do you have enough room for parking?
Well, we got the, I'm straight up. Good question.
I mean, it consists of like a lot of cars.
Yeah, the existing parking is right here, and there's going to be north parking.
Is it the same parking?
It's right next to the house, right there, right now. That's existing parking.
Right now, it's like...
Yeah, this is, right. This is a lot of, wrote it down, there's parking here and there's parking there.
Right. They put them in like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Because they're right, they're going ahead here, and...
They can't hear you.
Can you go over the, um, septic system?
You have to speak into the mic.
Oh, sorry. Can you go over the septic system with the cars and stuff? Is that all right?
If it's an H20 system, which is designed for cars to drive over, yes.
Right, and probably it's, right?
If it's in the driveway, it has to be.
Okay, I'm leaving the septic. Okay. So they are driving over. Okay, fine. Just such a small piece of crap. I just wanted to see the plan, what it was. And I have, I just wanted to see the plan, what it was, and, you know.
Well, we're adamant in town that you can't go over 20% of lot coverage.
Right.
The house is under the 20% with the addition.
Yeah, I know. Because they're going to, they're going to take the other things down.
Because they're taking your structure down, yes. So it's still well, well under the 20%, which is good.
Yeah, it'll look very nice, I'm sure. It's a cute little cottage, as is mine.
They're all nice out there. It's a nice spot.
It is, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? Questions, comments, concerns?
Scott, Scott, how?
Don?
No.
Okay. Bill, would you make a motion?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we approve a written finding for 34 Riverside Road. Owners David E. and Martha L. Thompson. Under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a bedroom addition on the property located in an R3 zoning district mapped 119 parcel 125 Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under general law 40A, section 6. It's also conditioned on a plot plan at 34 Riverside Road, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared for Capewide Enterprises, prepared by J.C. Engineering, Inc., 2854 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Mass. 02538. Scale is one inch, one inch equals 10 feet. June 16, 2017, signed by John L. Churchill, Jr., number 48066. Professional landscaper dated 6/16/17. Also conditioned on a first-floor plan. Ktuut Bay Design LLC, 43 Brewster Road, Mashpee, Mass. New garage for Hanson Residence, 34 Riverside Road, Mashpee, Mass. Scale 1/4 inch equals 1 foot. Dated 5/24/2017, drawing number A1. Front elevation, rear elevation, drawing number A2. It's also conditioned on the comments from all the town departments that have been read into the record.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Could I make a personal comment?
Sure.
I don't, for the under 174-17, says by right, we could do this, but we still need to have a written finding. Is the reason why this board doesn't allow this to happen without a written finding?
Okay.
Because it says if I meet all requirements, and that the second...
Okay, you applied for a written finding, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, because of the...
You want to comment on that?
No, because I always had a reverse comment on that position. Because I don't have the say.
What do we take you then?
We've had this conversation.
He doesn't have the authority to...
Approve it.
The way the bylaw is written.
Is it just wording in the bylaw? So we need a bylaw change, right?
Yeah, that wording has to get changed, and we haven't been able to do that yet.
Does the bylaw committee right now, as we set up, get the bylaws, right?
Yes.
So who's...
He doesn't have the authority to...
Who's the bylaw committee?
The county clerk. If I do, she'll give you the names.
Okay, all right, yeah, because I'd like to see that changed, because it's just...
So would a lot of us.
Yeah. That's my personal comment. Thank you very much.
I don't know of a lot, but I know of one.
Give me another set, please.
Well, I think we'd be less stuff coming to us if it wouldn't need to come to us.
Well done. I need another set, please.
Oh, I just put a pile somewhere.
There you are.
Excuse me.
And I, Mr. Chairman, I have to step down on 56 Spoon Drift Way.
Okay.
Copy. And that one.
Uh, what do we got? 24? Excuse me, 26. Correct?
Yeah.
26, that's one. Any more?
Oh, yeah.
How about these guys? Okay. Let's do it. Move this stuff. Jim, would you read the next new hearing?
Opening the hearing, 56 Spoon Drift Way.
I have two.
Owner Amy P. Coughlin requests a written finding under West 74-17 and 174-20 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district. Map 112 parcel 37 Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Okay, sitting on this will be Brad and the four regular members. Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Corain, and I have the pleasure of representing Amy Coughlin in connection with the application that you have before you for a specific finding in order to permit the raising and replacing of a single-family residence at 56 Spoon Drift Way. I have provided the board with a couple of additional plans that are colored similar to the one that I have put up on the board, might make it easier to follow. Also provided the board with some photographs. Photographs on the left-hand side, photographs of the existing structure. The photographs on the right-hand side are photographs of other dwellings that have been the subject matter of raise and replace projects in the immediate neighborhood. In fact, the, the structure on this side was approved for raise and replace and was reconstructed. The dwelling on the left side of the property, as you face it, was also approved for raise and replace, but that has never actually come to fruition. The colored plan that I have provided shows you an outline in yellow of the existing structure.
Yes.
The shaded gray area is the proposed structure. The property, as you can see, is situated on an approximately 15,000 square foot lot and has approximately 100 feet of frontage on Spoon Drift Way. As you can see, the lot backs up to Pompano City Creek. Slopes from the street to the creek, about 16 feet, and that as such allows for the inclusion of a walkout in the particular design. You'll also note that the lot is much wider at the front, narrows to the rear of the lot as well. Currently, as you can see from the photographs, there is a single-family residential structure. It's a structure of approximately a footprint of 2,800 square feet. It covers 19.8% of the lot. The residence is a three-bedroom home built in the late 1960s. As you can see, the structure is non-conforming, as the existing structure outlined in yellow, sits a mere 6.1 feet from what I will refer to and have referred to as the northerly sideline. The structure, existing structure, sits 12.6 feet from the southerly property line. I would point out that the, the deck, which configuration is remaining, sits about 11 feet from that property line. But the actual building itself sits 12.6 feet from that property line. In addition, as you can see, coastal bank essentially runs through a portion of the existing deck, and the deck itself is only a distance of 10 feet off the salt marsh. The current structure, principal structure is 30.4 feet off the salt marsh. As you know, we're in the R3 zoning district. The lot requirements in that district, 40,000 square feet, 150 feet of frontage. Obviously, the lot doesn't conform, and the current setback requirements is 40 in the front, 15 to the side and rear, and 50 from the abutting wetland resource areas.
Right.
We are proposing to replace that non-conforming structure with a new three-bedroom, single-family residential structure pursuant to the provisions of 174-17, which is, the board is well aware that that requires a finding by this board that the proposed new construction will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists, that there are sufficient setbacks, and that there is sufficient area to provide adequate parking to service the single-family residential use. Now, as I said, the existing structure to the north is situated 6.1 feet from the property line. You will note that the new structure will be situated 15.7 feet from that northerly property line. Therefore, we are taking a non-conforming condition and making it conforming. The structure conforms in the front, being set back some 60 feet from the street. The deck, as I say, is remaining the same. So we still have the 11-foot setback from the sideline on the deck. However, I would point out that the principal structure, the existing principal structure is 12.6 feet from the southerly property line. The new structure, principal structure, will be 15.7 are feet from the, 16 feet from the side property line to the south. Therefore, the structure itself, with the actual living space included, will conform to the setback requirement from the southerly law line. But as I say, I point out that the deck is remaining, so that will still be a non-conforming condition on that particular side of the property. The overall lot coverage is being reduced slightly from 19.8% to 19.3%. Still within the 20% that is allowed under the provisions of the zoning bylaw. The construction will be, of course, complying with the new building codes. The existing septic system is not being replaced, but the, but the septic tank is being removed to accommodate the inclusion of a garage in the particular design. And you can see where that tank is being removed from the front in a northerly direction towards that sideline. As I said, in evaluating the criteria as to whether or not we are creating a condition that is substantially more detrimental, I would suggest to the board that by improving the setbacks of the existing structure, including the setback from the wetland, because the, the new structure excluding the deck, and as I said, the deck isn't changing, but the new structure will be set back about 36 feet from the marsh, whereas the current structure is set back only just over 30 feet from the marsh. So, again, I hate to keep repeating myself about the, about the deck. The deck is staying where it is, so that setback is remaining the same. But the principal living structure, we are actually improving all of the setbacks from the wetlands and from both sidelines. And couple that with the fact that we are bringing the building into compliance with the new building code, taking into consideration any flood plain requirements that may have to be considered, and also taking into account, as you could see from the photographs that I have provided, that what is being proposed is consistent with other new development that has been taking place in this particular neighborhood for the last 10 years. Given that, I really don't have anything further to add. I believe the project has been approved by the Conservation Commission. And as I say, the only thing that the Board of Health would be involved in would be the fact that we're moving the septic tank, and I'm not sure how involved they get in that process, moving it from one location on the site to another.
Okay, very good. Anybody on the board? Questions, concerns?
Couple things, if I may. Kevin, you were saying that the deck is not being moved, but yet the plan prepared by your associates shows it a new deck line. I don't understand.
The, the distance from the side yard and the, and the...
Being replaced in the same footprint?
Pretty much, I would say, yeah.
But I'm just, I'm just wondering why it's showing a new deck line, a dashed line. It's just, I wish you didn't show it that way.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that is. But I do know that the setbacks aren't changing.
New deck line stuff. Mike's comments.
This is a surprise, I believe, that's supporting the pictures that show you.
I wish it said deck line.
Yeah. But what I... I confirm with the engineer that the deck is really, they may be changing the configuration of it, but within the confines of that...
So it's not getting any closer to the wetlands that exist today?
Not getting any closer to the wetland and not getting any closer to the side yet.
Okay. So it's not becoming more...
Detrimental.
And, yes, less conforming.
More non-conforming.
Right.
Okay. I don't have any concerns. Don?
No.
And Brad's on this one, right?
Yep.
Any concerns?
Yeah, we need to read some.
Yeah, let's read in some comments from the different departments. All right, let me read, let me read the Board of Health. 56 Spoon Drift Way. Owner Amy P. Coughlin requests a written finding on 174-17 and 174-20 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling, property located R3 zoning district. Map 112 parcel 37 Mashpee, Mass. Goes on to say, "Board of Health comments, proposed plan requires a new septic tank to be installed. Special permit must be obtained by a licensed septic inspector prior to issuance of a building permit." So is that an inspector or a...
So I think that needed to say...
I think you misread. It said septic permit, not special permit.
I'm sorry. Septic is correct. So is it a septic inspector?
No, it should, I think, believe, it should say, "Septic permit must be obtained by a licensed septic..."
Installer?
...designer or engineer of Board of Health. So am I correct in that?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think that's just a type of.
Okay.
It certainly can be done relatively easy. It's not an inspector, it would be an engineer, Title V engineer, whatever.
You can see that it's only moving a few feet on the front. It's moving from this location to this location.
It just would need a task that you'd need to do.
And if I may, the Board of Health is the only department that can prevent me from issuing a building permit because it deals with, you know, water and septic, and if I don't have that, there's no way it can issue a building code.
I'm just saying. Yeah, it wouldn't matter to you if it's conditioned upon the statement anyway, as long as the statement is correct and it's not, it's just not an inspector, it's a designer or engineer.
Okay, and this is prior to the issuance of a building permit. "The septic inspection must be performed to confirm that the SAS has the proper setback to groundwater and operation. A road and control inspection is required by an agent of the Board of Health, and an asbestos inspection must be performed by a private asbestos inspector as part of the demolition checklist. Floor plans must be submitted and are acceptable. Dwelling limited to three bedrooms. Demolition checklist shall be completed prior to demo permit sign-off."
I think also, floor plans have been submitted and are acceptable.
Okay. Let's see. Conservation says project was approved by the commission, and I don't have the inspections.
Right here.
Would you read it?
And I think this is one you need to pay close attention to, Kevin. Fifty-six Spoon Drift Way. The area is zoned R-three and is also within the pre-contact archaeology-sensitive area listed as I. The applicant is seeking a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen, one seventy-four twenty, and one seventy-four thirty-three, fifty-foot buffer of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling. Also, because part of the structure falls within the VE zone, it is my understanding the entire house will have to meet the requirements for construction within the VE zone.
That'll be up to the builder and the architect to make sure that...
Pass that along to them, I guess is the point.
Will it substantially change? I just, I just don't know if it's going to substantially change your appearance, et cetera, et cetera, but I guess that's something that can be handled between...
It shouldn't change it, because all we're talking about here is whether or not we have a floor that can be used for storage or a floor that's open.
So you believe, correct me if I'm wrong, it can be dealt with when it gets to you?
Oh, yes.
That's it.
That is it. Any other questions or comments? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to Amy P. Coughlin, fifty-six Spoon Drift Way, under section one seventy-four seventeen, one seventy-four twenty of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling and properly located in R-three zoning district, map one twelve, parcel thirty-seven, Mashpee, Mass. In issuing this written finding, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of written finding under Mass. General Law Forty, Section Six. And number two, I'd like to make reference to the following plans. Proposed site design plan to accompany notice of intent, project proposed raise and rebuild of existing dwelling, fifty-six Spoon Drift Way in Mashpee, Mass., owner of record, Amy P. Coughlin, fifteen Ridge Road, Westwood, Mass., oh-two-oh-nine-oh. Applicant Amy P. Coughlin, sheet one of one, date three sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Drawing file number Spoon Drift fifty-six, drawn by M.C., checked by M.C., prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, Sunfield Park, eight hundred Falmouth Road, suite three-oh-one-C, Mashpee, Mass., revision one, five nineteen seventy. Remove prop retaining wall. I presume that's property retaining wall. Add bank stabilization. By M.C., approved by M.C., signed by Matthew C. Costa, number five-two-two-A-two, professional land surveyor. Also make reference to house plans. Your Associates, Inc., architects' plans, elevations, Coughlin Residence, fifty-six Spoon Drift Way, Mashpee, Mass., scale AN, date twelve sixteen, approved, drawn by J.C. and K.S. Project number twelve oh-one, drawing number A-one, front elevation scale quarter inch equals one foot, right elevation scale quarter inch equals one foot, elevation key A-two, water side elevation, left elevation scale one quarter inch equals one foot, scale plans A-three. First floor plan, section floor plan, scale quarter inch equals one foot, basement plan, scale quarter inch equals one foot, A-four. Conditioned on all town department comments to be read into, that are read into the record specifically in reference to the inspection department and the Board of Health in reference to the tank relocation.
And as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, I requested to say that in section twenty, but I'm... Because I don't think it's necessary.
So how would you like to handle maybe that request first and then the, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, it's up to you?
I don't know.
Handle that one first. He's a draw.
If you'd like to, I'd make a motion that we accept the applicant's request for withdrawal of the application on one seventy-four twenty only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
And then I made a motion in reference to the overall property, striking one seventy-four twenty.
Okay. Do we have a second on the other one? All those in favor? Aye. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Nice project.
Well done.
Thank you.
Stop heading in this direction.
Paper? It's coming.
Now, are you?
I need two more. I need one of these and...
Coming over. Booklets.
Okay. How's that?
Hang on, I'm going to be showing you a little too much.
Here you go. How are you, sir? I'm fine, thank you.
My name is Ben Lasoto. I'm representing the applicants, Dean and Linda Schaefer.
Can we slow down a bit?
Is this, is this...
This is... I need one more of these. Do we have that?
Do we have more paper down here on this one?
So this is the last one.
We're still, we're still filing.
There we go.
Sorry about that.
Still working.
Still working. I'm looking for another one of the plans, the thick ones. We have two of them.
Check your pockets.
You want, I've got some more.
That's it, right there, you just folded.
What?
Yeah, it's only one copy though.
That's only one copy.
But I just handed one down, didn't I?
Oh, all right. We did?
We get two.
No, that's different. It's a site plan.
I don't have any site plan. I don't have any house plans.
Nope.
I've got, you want this?
Smaller one.
It's a smaller one.
Just pass it down if you don't need it.
All right, well, just use it then. Use it then?
Yeah.
All right, thanks to me. All right, there you go. There you go. There you go. Thank you.
Okay, Jim, would you read the next new hearing?
Opening the hearing. One thirty-three Pompanessett Island Road. Owners Dean and Linda Schaefer request a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen and one seventy-four dash thirty-three to raise and replace a single-family dwelling on property located in an R-three zoning district, map one twelve, parcel seventeen, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Hey, look, I am Ben Lasoto. I represent the applicants, Dean and Linda Schaefer, who sent you some sandwich, Massachusetts.
He needs to pick up the mic. He's...
Yeah, come here. And this is a raise and replace, like the other hearings you had today, and I gave you some information, additional information. There's a, this is the site, this is the assessors map showing the property. It's out on Pompanessett Island, fairly far out. It's, the house was built in eighty-one, and this is what the house looks like. If you'd like to pass that around. And one of the reasons I'm passing that around is the houses on, surrounding it have apparently been raised and replaced. This house is next door, one twenty-seven Pompanessett Island Road. It's, I'll pass that around. Scott, listen, how do you want to do this?
Oh, I've seen it. I've seen them all. Thank you.
This is on the other side. This, I believe, is one thirty-nine Island, Pompanessett Island Road. And this particular house has a deck in the back. It's basically one-story walkout. It has a deck in the back and it has a stairway. It's fairly well ornamented, with ornamental grasses and lawns, right up to the top of the coastal bank. Now, the top of the coastal bank is defined by a seawall. There's about a three, two or three-foot seawall, and that's where the landscaping starts. And my client has a dock going out into Pompanessett Creek, as do many of the houses there, and the dock has a deck just before it. And so what we have is a deck, an existing deck with a stairway down, about twenty feet of lawn and ornamental plantings, and then a larger deck, which is part of the dock perimeter, part of the dock. This is a picture of the dock.
Yes, the deck. Over here.
Okay, and so we would like to raise and replace this house. If you take a look at the next page, it shows the location of the existing house...
See what happens right here?
On the lot. Existing house is about thirty feet, the house itself is thirty feet from the wetland, and our proposal is to actually move the new house back a couple of feet. So the new house is going to be thirty-two feet from the wetland. So we're moving that back, but in exchange, we're moving the deck further forward. And I think, other than moving the deck forward, the new house is going to be conforming to all the requirements of the bylaw. The lot was created in the sixties, so it's a twenty-six thousand square foot lot in a forty thousand square foot area. It's R-three. The frontage is a hundred and twenty-five feet, and it slopes down to the water. Requirements one fifty, but once again, this was existing. This was an existing, pre-existing lot before the zoning went to forty thousand. So the lot itself is a, is a, is a non-conforming, legal non-conforming, pre-existing lot. House was built in eighty-one. Tom Fidella tells me that the fifty-foot setback from the wetland was adopted in eighty-three at fifty feet. So this house already existed at the time of that, of that, of that setback was put into effect. So what we have here is a pre-existing, non-conforming structure. Now, the new house is going to meet all the requirements except for the setback from the wetland. Front setback required is forty, we get eighty-nine feet, plenty of room. Side setbacks required are fifteen, we have fifteen-one and fifteen-two. So we meet all the requirements. Rear setbacks fifteen, we get ninety-eight feet. Minimum lot coverage is, I'm sorry, maximum lot coverage is twenty percent. Engineers calculated the lot coverage using the upland area. We have eighteen thousand square feet of upland. The new structure is going to be thirty-four hundred square feet, and it's eighteen point eight lot coverage. So we meet the, we meet the standard there. Existing's fourteen point four. But once again, I think, I think what this comes down to is, is, is the proposal is to, is to move the deck forward. I believe it's to, it's going to make it a better house. So the question is...
Excuse me?
Yes.
You say move the deck forward, move it closer to the coastal bank, right?
Yes, it's going to be closer to the wetland. That's correct.
How far is the current...
Currently, it's seven feet.
From the wetlands?
Seven feet.
So it's twenty from the wetlands, it really should be fifty, but it's pre-existing, non-conforming.
Correct.
Now you want to move it to how far?
Fifteen point four feet.
Why?
Make the deck larger, more useful.
Why are you going closer to the wetlands, though?
Provide a view of the ocean is what it is.
Right.
There's a view issue there. So it really comes down to, the test is, is whether this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Now, this project has been before Conservation, and at the end of the, in this, in this package I gave you, Conservation approved us. The particular plan you're all looking at was the plan they approved in their June twenty-second meeting. There was an existing order of conditions in two thousand fourteen, and what they did was they amended it to reflect this plan, including with the deck going closer. In order to get that approved by Conservation, my clients had to make a number of concessions. Number one is they moved the house back, first of all. Second of all, even though where the lawn and the ornamental shrubs, these here are above the coastal bank and on this side of the seawall...
That's it?
Sure.
Thanks.
They've agreed to remove part of the lawn and all the ornamental shrubs and replace them with native species. So basically, they're giving up their landscaping in order to, in order for Conservation to agree to...
This is, this is to obtain the orders you have now?
Correct. In other words, in order to, in order to have Conservation Commission agree that we can move the deck forward, because, of course, they're the people that, their primary interest is protecting wetland values. They had agreed to do so because of several things. Moving the house further back. Second of all, pulling up a lot of that landscaping and replacing it with native wetland species. And third of all, my clients have agreed to restore four thousand feet of wetland, which is substantially all the wetland on their property. So they're going to run into some great expense in order to do that. And in exchange, Conservation felt that that was a, that was a reasonable accommodation for them to make. If we were to do all this work, we start to look rough. The other thing is, is on one side of us, we have, this, this board allowed, this board allowed, I believe, the house to come seven feet further forward, and it allowed a swimming pool to be put in and gave the applicant at that time in two thousand eight, a twenty-five foot variance in order to allow the swimming pool put in. The edge of the concrete shows on the plan is fourteen feet, and now there are structures right on the wetland line. That wall is basically the wetland line for that particular property. And that property is forward of Oz. That's actually closer to the middle of the creek. Now, the land does...
Now, when you keep saying now, forward to me would be, we have to watch your language. Forward isn't forward to the street, it's forward closer to the creek.
Correct. Yep.
So push back is what you're saying from the road more?
Yes, and so...
This one is?
Yes. In fact, several properties...
So in other words, you're encroaching the wetlands closer?
We're not encroaching on the wetlands, but we're getting...
You're already in it, right? You're actually already in it, right?
No, no, we're in the, we're in the fifty-foot...
You're within the fifty-foot...
Correct. Yeah, we're already in the fifty-foot. If we, if we were conforming, then we would need a variance to do this. Because we're non-conforming, then the test is different.
Pre-existing, you mean?
Yeah, it's pre-existing. And a pre-existing non-conformity can become more non-conforming as long as it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So that's a test. The wetland values are more or less, we feel, have been dealt with by Conservation because, because of the concessions my clients made in the agreement to do a lot of restoration work and eliminate some of the landscaping. So in their opinion, apparently, they thought this was a, a fair exchange, that they were getting more of an advantage out of it in exchange for the deck coming forward. Once again, as you can see, there's a lot of, as we look to one side, to the one twenty-seven side, there's the pool, but the, you'll see the house beyond one twenty-seven also goes further out toward the creek than we are, and the house on the other side of us, which I believe is either one thirty-seven or one thirty-nine in the pictures there, also is probably about twenty or thirty feet closer to the creek than we are. Now, the wetland does come in to some point, but we're not creating a problem for the neighbors, and the encroachment, the further encroachment onto the wetland is all deck. Now, right now, I believe the house is, I believe, about seven foot elevation, and of course, we're going to raise the house and we're going to raise the deck. So that deck, rather than being on the ground, is going to be fifteen feet in the air. So, yes, it's an encroachment, but on the other hand, it's in the air. It's not, it's not enclosed. I believe, one of the pictures, the guy on one thirty-seven, he has an enclosed deck out there. He enclosed under the deck, and I think that would be substantially more intrusive onto that wetland setback area. We have a floating deck in the air. So you're right, it is more encroaching. The bank, the board has done it before, they did it with the guy next door, with the pool and his house. We're not any further closer to the creek than any of their neighbors. Most of the, most of the neighbors are a little bit in front of us. Most of the neighbors is a little bit in front of us. And there's a seawall there. This is a picture of the seawall. That is the, this seawall is the top of the bank. That's what they call on the top of the bank. So everything is outside of that. And we already have the existing deck for the, we already have the existing deck for the dock, which was permitted. So it's kind of a funny situation. There's literally already a deck there. Actually, within the wetland line is part of the dock that was permitted. So I feel that the arrangements made with conservation seem to mitigate the effects of this deck coming forward a few feet between all the other things that the clients are doing. But this is the only non-conformity there.
Everything else is conforming.
Yeah, everything else is conforming, correct. That's the only additional non-conformity.
Mike, I have a question about the two-and-a-half stories.
Yes.
Would you talk to me about that after looking at that? I assume that's the front view?
Yes.
Looks like a garage.
Because it's a garage. And that's the back, and then...
Looks like three there.
Correct, because it's a walkout basement.
Correct.
Which you can do. But the sides are...
What about the percentage of...
Well, it's not because you've got more than 50% on both sides, so you don't have three sides exposed. So it doesn't become a story under the building code.
Anybody in the audience? Nope? Okay. Ron?
So I was in meetings with, I think it's important to make this statement, with Drew in reference to the variances and/or the findings and/or allowing, you know, distances less than 50 feet. And his opinion is, hey, you don't always have to file, I have to follow conservation's input. You know, you have a, you have different baseline or understanding in reference to zoning than we do in reference to conservation. But I will say this. I think if you took conservation out of this, if you took the wetlands out of this, this whole house would be conforming, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So having said that, conservation, who has far more wisdom in wetlands issues than I do, has made the applicant do certain things, and they're now happy. I got to tell you, I'm happy. I have no problem with the applicant pushing their deck closer to the wetlands due to the fact that the applicant has satisfied the conservation commission in a manner that is, in the conservation commission's opinion, better for the environment.
Bill?
The way I look at a case like this is, I want to look, number one, what you're actually filing for, and in this case, you're filing for, you're asking for a written finding, where the true test, there's a number of tests, but the true test is whether it's more detrimental than what previously exists. The second thing that I like to look at is all the comments from the various departments. And we've gotten comments from conservation. They have made you do certain things, and they feel good about it. So as far as I'm concerned, if the other departments are happy with it, the only test I'm left to really measure is whether you're more, if you're more non-conforming than what previously exists, and I would say, no, you are not, then therefore, I would be okay with this, based on conservation having you do what they've had you do.
Jim, you were in conservation?
We often made similar deals with, if you will, with proponents. It's always a give and take. And I would personally have no problem with that in my 14, 15 years' experience on the conservation commission.
Yeah. And we have you sitting on this one, I believe, yes?
Yeah.
Brad's out on the last one. Dom?
I have no comment.
Okay. I was in the same meeting with Drew that Ron was in, and this was yesterday, and we asked him about 133, was it approved because it was going closer to the wetlands? And I actually wrote it out because I wanted to make sure I got it right. It said, talk with him, ask him if it was approved even though the structure was moving closer to the wetlands. Drew said it was approved because the structure was going into a previously disturbed area. Drew went on to explain that conservation looks to see if the project is disturbing the wetlands area that was undisturbed prior to the request. He explained that the area that was requested, that they requested the relief on was previously disturbed because it is a grass lawn and the project was not making the situation worse. Drew went on to further explain that setbacks per se were not part of his purview. He doesn't really care about setbacks. What he cares about is disturbing wetlands. So he leaves the setbacks up to the zoning board. Doesn't even think about it. So it's really our job to make sure that the setbacks are hit by. And, you know, it's kind of apples and oranges, in my view, because conservation is not concerned about setbacks. They're concerned about disturbing the wetlands. I mean, do you agree with the disturbing the wetlands?
Well, yes and no, number one. You want to minimally disturb the wetlands, if at all, but you certainly want to try to honor the 50-foot setbacks as much as possible. But if it's a previously disturbed area, which is a lawn, which, you know, is not part of a...
Wasn't natural.
Yeah, it's not an ecosystem of the bank. I can see no harm done if I were on the conservation commission.
But we're talking about setbacks here.
And, okay, so the setback, you know, since they made all of these probably expensive changes, and in order to accommodate the conservation commission, I would not have a problem with this, okay, with the setback.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask a question. So are you concerned about distance, the, so conservation, who is, the wetlands is, I'll call it their thing, right? So they're not concerned about the 15 feet or 12 feet or whatever that is. My attitude is, if the conservation commission is concerned about, isn't concerned about, I would be more concerned about distance on side yard where there's another house or a front yard where it's substantially different than in the neighborhood. I mean, when you're driving down, when you're in a boat going down this waterway, you can't even tell where that wetland line is or isn't because it doesn't mean it's water, it's wetland growth or vegetation in many cases. So you really, unless you had a scientist out there, you wouldn't be able to tell 15, 20, 30, 60, whatever, in reality. So this becomes a, it's kind of moot to me because unless you had a wetland scientist standing there saying, this is where wetland starts, there's no way to understand where that line begins and ends. So it's far different for me when it's house, house, and there's only 10 feet, and the neighbor's sitting there saying, hey, I got a problem. I'm not seeing that. I don't think anybody driving down the, down the stream or river in a boat is going to say, they're close to the wee resource area. Happy, because you don't even know where the resource area starts and stops. So I don't see that as a problem.
One of the problems is if this were a fully conforming lot, then you go to a variance procedure, which is much, much more stringent.
Yeah, no, we got you there.
But we're dealing with the test, of course, is if something's detrimental to the neighborhood.
The bylaw states 50 feet.
Understood.
They're currently at 20? 25, it says. Currently at how far from the wetlands?
20.7.
Moving to 15?
5.8, so from me to you. To a resource area that if you and I went out there, we wouldn't be able to tell where that started or stopped.
Let me finish one thing, though. You're not moving the house. The house is going...
The house is actually going to go back.
Right. But you're making the deck much bigger.
Five feet on it. Correct.
Not longer, closer...
Yeah, closer to the water, or wider. Closer to the water, that's correct.
See, I'd like to see you move the whole house back five feet.
You mean forward to the road?
Closer to the road, away from the wetlands.
Counselor, can I ask you a question? I'm somewhat... You're 25 feet from the...
Oh, that was the neighbor. That was the neighbor's property, 127.
That's the guy with the swimming pool right here.
Okay. So, yeah, it's 20.7, it says on existing. And if we look up here, it goes to...
15.4.
15.4.
Correct.
So Jonathan, I was just also looking at the front elevation. So if you look at this front elevation, if you look at this grade issue, I don't know how that's going to work, steepness and driveway, et cetera, as you move it closer to the main road. Because if you close up the distance, you've got to get from here to there. So, right? So you begin to get into a situation where, hey, the further he pushes that house back, the better the pitch is going to be to this point right here, this low point. The closer he gets to the street, the more it's, the radical, the more radical it's going to get. So, listen, I'm not trying to change your vote, I'm just trying to tell you some of the things that I think we need to consider.
I'm also concerned about potential setting a precedent here.
I think each case stands on itself.
Well, I know it does, but go ahead, Mike.
I've got a question. This deck cantilevered? Or has support columns?
Right now, it has support columns.
All right. And where, I don't see anything on a plan here, but where are the support columns? And I guess my question is, if the deck's going out five feet more, is the support columns in a particular location where the deck extends four feet, two feet, three feet?
Yeah, right now...
Because what we're talking about here is empty air and a couple of posts in the ground.
Yeah, right now, if you take a look at the...
Not a solid wall.
At the side view, you can see the posts, and they're on at the edge of the deck.
Yeah, so that's, but that's not what I, that's not, so they go to the end of the deck, Mike? All right.
Yeah, they're moving out to the waters.
You didn't help.
They couldn't be cantilevered, though.
Well, no, but I'm just saying is...
You move the post back the five feet, cantilever to the five feet, is what you're saying, Mike, I think?
Right, but then, then it doesn't matter because then it's not in the area. It won't make a difference. Right.
So if you have five foot, can you cantilever it five feet?
Oh, depends if you get a good engineer.
Get enough...
So they're saying it's to cantilever five feet or something in that area, two, three, four, five feet, or whatever that might be, then you're getting the movement of earth and all the rest out of that area.
We could do that.
I don't, now, listen, that's...
All right. Do we have comments from these boards?
We could bring those supports in five feet and just cantilever that last five feet, so like you say, it's an empty area. That shouldn't be a problem.
We have, yes, inspection department. Yes, we do have comments.
All right. Would you read inspections? We'll start there.
Inspection department comments, July 26, 2017, RE, July 26th, no, I'm sorry, July 25, 2017, RE, July 26, 2017, hearing to the members of the ZBA, 133 Papadessen Island Road. The area is zone R3, and most of the property is also within the pre-contact archaeology sensitive area listed as moderate. The applicant is seeking a written finding under 17417 and 17433, 50-foot buffer of zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling. Please note, on the existing site, the existing deck is between 13.4 to 15 feet from the top of the coastal bank. What is proposed is that the proposed deck will be 10.6 to 11.3 from the top of the coastal bank. Also, because part of the structure falls within the VE zone, it is my understanding that the entire house will have to meet the requirements of construction within the VE zone. Sincerely, Michael Mendoza, Building Commissioner.
We have conservation, Board of Health.
We do.
Go ahead.
Board of Health. Go ahead.
Okay. Board of Health. Board of Health comments, July 26, 2017, 133 Papadessen Island Road, Board of Health comments, the proposed septic plan has been submitted and approved for four bedrooms. Septic permit must be obtained by a licensed septic inspector prior to issuance of building permit. The road and control inspection has to be performed by an agent of the Board of Health, and an asbestos inspection must be performed by a private asbestos inspector as part of the demolition checklist. No floor plans have been submitted. Dwelling limited to four bedrooms. Demolition checklist shall be completed prior to demo permit sign-off. Floor plans to be provided prior to building permit approved by Board of Health.
Project was approved by the commission.
I'm not really convinced on this, to be honest with you.
Would you feel better if Mr. Bonvey's suggestion were followed through by cantilevering it out five feet and then having that just above there and no disturbance?
Absolutely. Is that something you...
I hear where you're coming from, but when you look at the plans, we're talking about what appears to be, and if you all look at, it looks like there's just three posts we're talking about.
I know.
Yes, it's minimal work.
It's minimal work.
And it's in an area that is existing lawn. So it's already disturbed here. It's not like we're disturbing, somebody's disturbing wetlands is building it by putting those in. You're disturbing a lawn. Yes.
I understand that, but you're talking with your conservation hat on, not your zoning hat.
Got you. I agree with that.
I'm talking as the building commissioner, we're talking about three posts, and I do know for a fact, there's actually products out there that, in a sense, no holes actually go into the ground, where it's, they just bang these spikes into the ground and supports the deck. I've seen them in use. They used a lot in, a lot of river places and river bends out in Natick, where they have walkways. I mean, if it was a wall, I get where you're coming from, a foundation, we're talking about, you know, six-inch, eight-inch sonotubes. That's what it is.
How hard is it, in your opinion, to cantilever a deck? It's relatively easy for two feet, right? Maybe even three feet. It's actually a little harder, four and five feet, right?
Correct.
So what if we, and I'm just trying to understand so we can get an understanding from us. So what if, if it's back, not at the wall, but back two or three feet, which makes it relatively easy still to build, and not push the wall all the way back to five? If that gives Jonathan a comfort level, not a big deal, I probably would hope for the builder, not a big deal for anyone else, and if Jonathan becomes more comfortable than, meaning move it back two or three feet, so you've got a two-foot overhang or a three-foot overhang?
I think we have to appreciate the stance of the chairman because he's trying to protect the integrity of the board in past and future determinations. So I understand where he's coming from, and therefore, I think a compromise that satisfies him would be nice.
I would say structurally, without getting an engineer involved, a cantilevering, I think three would be the max, without raising some questions.
Would that get you a comfort level, Jonathan?
Better than it is now.
We can do that.
Well, I just think moving this back, as Mr. Bonvey said, you have a very steep decline, 14, 13, 12, 11, one on top of the other. So that wouldn't be too good to have, you know, you step out and then you roll down the hill.
No, we're talking about where he's going to put the support posts.
Yeah, the support posts. That's what we're talking about.
If you move the whole thing back...
Move it back three feet with a three-foot cantilever.
Oh, no, he went in a direction.
Yeah. You're talking about moving the entire house back.
Yes, move the whole house back towards the road.
It would create, what I was saying, greater pitch to the driveway.
You understand, it's not about that, it's about getting a view of the ocean, which was his first statement. That's why they're increasing the deck, how many feet? Five feet?
Yes.
I would suggest that may be a bonus.
It was what, four, and now it's going to be nine, or?
Yeah.
Because I can, just look at the difference between the two.
So, yeah, the answer is substantially, that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
That's right.
It's probably, it looks like almost twice the, what would you call it, depth?
Correct. But if you look at the neighborhood, there are two out of the three houses around us are further to the coastal side of the creek than we are.
I saw that in you.
We're way out of line with the neighborhood, which is, I think, a part of John, the worst We're way out of line with the neighborhood, which is, I think, a part of John, the board's job is to protect the neighborhood under this particular test.
I saw, I saw some of the pictures you handed out of the houses. If you look directly from behind the house that you're talking about across, there are houses.
I have those pictures, yeah.
That's all right.
And then, so that's another place I'm comfortable, because we always talk about lining up the front of houses, you know, so we can get closer to a street.
Average setback.
Yeah, so now we're talking about, so let's take it to the next theory, which is average setback in the rear. And he's dying close to being...
Is there such a thing?
Look pretty good.
He just made it up.
I don't think there's such a thing as average setback in the rear.
There isn't. He's looking at it from a visual...
So what we have to look at is from visual, right? That's the only comment we have here, and how do we deal with this visually? And that's why I keep saying, it's to a wetland line or a line of growth, of plant growth, which I don't understand, that's a problem of myself conceptually. But more importantly, if somebody next to him is already at 10 or 12 or 13 feet, somebody on the other side of him is 12 or 13 feet to that wetland line, he's at 15, what's the problem with him going to 12?
We can't undo what was done eight years ago.
We probably did it. I'm looking at that...
And conservation has no issue.
Yeah.
And I know we can't use that as a basis. And like I said, my compromise, because like you said, if you cantilever it and all you do is bring in three posts, essentially back three feet.
All right.
And we can do that, it's not a problem.
How would you amend this?
Who would condition it?
I'd just condition it.
I'm sure I could make a motion that would be, that would fit your needs if that would satisfy you.
I don't think he knows anything about construction.
Henry Clay, the great compromiser.
Say again?
I think we're beating this to death.
All right, why don't you make a motion then on that?
I would like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to Dean and Linda Schaffer of 133 Papadessen Island Road under 17417 and 17433 to raise and replace a single-family dwelling property located in R3 zoning district, map 112 parcel 17, Mashpee Mass. And what I'd like to do, well, so when I go right down it, let's just get it done. So the board has determined, I also am an issue in this finding, the board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding in the Mass General laws 48, section 6. I like to make reference to a site plan, a site plan, design plan, project address, 133 Papadessen Island Road, Mashpee Mass, drawn by Cape Town Islands Engineer in Summerfield Park, 800 Falmouth Road, suite 301C, Mashpee Mass, assessors ID 112-12-0-R, approved by MC, checked by CC, drawn by MC, date 7/18/14, revision number one, date 9/314, changed sides of deck, added frag, F-R-A-G, period area, I don't even know what that is, made by MC, checked by CC, number two, date 4/27/17, revised proposed house and driveway made by JB, checked by MC, number three, date 6/19/17, revised proposed grading, added retaining walls, made by MC, checked by MC, signed by Matthew C. Costa, number 5228T, professional and surveyor. House plans, drawing title, exterior elevation scale is noted, job one, number 1635, drawn by MB, checked by MB, approved by MB. Project Schaffer Residence, 133 Papadessen Island Road, Mashpee Mass, MBF 7, Highland Place, Seacliff, New York, 11579, M. Brosch Frayers, architect, PC, revision one, 042817, issued by ARC Review, A-06, front elevation, rear elevation A-07, side elevation, building section. Conditioned on all town, department, comments read into the record, and conditioned on the rear deck, the footings of the rear decks and supports of the rear deck, as depicted of the plan, are at the end of the deck, closest to the creek. We would, now the condition would be is to move those supports...
Three feet.
Three feet further away from the creek, thus creating a three-foot overhang of the deck. And you would have to satisfy the town building inspector in reference to structural integrity of that deck at the time of the application of the building permit. So that his supports, i.e. footings, would be, what is your distance right now at the edge of the deck, 15?
The edge of the deck is 15.4.
So the footings would be at 18.4...
Yes.
From the resource area.
Those numbers sound right?
Mm-hmm.
Would that work for you, sir?
It would.
Would that work for you, sir?
Do we have a second?
I'll second then.
Okay. How do you vote?
I vote in favor of this.
Don?
I vote in favor of this.
In favor?
In favor.
I'll vote in favor.
Thank you.
Good luck. Nice project, nice house.
Thank you, sir.
Staring down at the million-dollar house there, twenty million dollars.
Oh, I have to remind you all to sign on your line.
Why, who didn't? Why, who didn't?
I don't know, Ron.
No!
Really? Did I say that? It wasn't me.
Skip Scott.
That's it.
26, isn't it? How many times am I going to ask that question?
I keep checking my phone every time.
On the booklets, please.
I can't remember either.
Sign all that paper down, if you would.
Make sure, don't, sign on your line, Don.
Okay.
Yeah, so you got to skip one, I think.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just get yelled at, though.
I've never seen one of these pictures ever.
Those are old pictures, anyway.
As long as we don't need them.
Right here, how's this one? How's that?
I'm the quality control checker.
You're the quality control checker. Look at all these...
Looks good to me, Mike.
Okay. Well, Mimi Anne's the judge, she's the boss.
John.
So do you want all this stuff, too, Mimi Anne?
Ron. Ron.
We kept this picture.
Pass that on.
Why not? Oh, more pictures? Okay, Jim, would you read the first and only other business?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
That would be July 12, 2017 minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Don?
I make a motion that we...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.